All right, well, I guess we'll go ahead and start our next meeting. This is going to be the Committee of the Whole. If the clerk would please call the roll, we'll call the meeting order.
Councilmembers Brown, Hazen, Hershey, Jacobson, Miller, Roberts, Wu, Mayor Marlin.
Here.
All right, first up, we have approval of the minutes from our previous meeting of July 8th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
I'll second it.
It's moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Dean. Are there any corrections, notes for the minutes? All right, all those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Seeing none, that is passed. All right, are there any additions to the agenda? Not seeing any. We're going to move on to public input. I have one card here from Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood, who do not wish to speak, but do wish that it be entered into the record that they are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems and historic impact. All right, up next, we've got presentations, but none listed. And a staff report, I move, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I had a couple of items. First of all, we understand there may be severe weather moving in tonight. In the event that we have to take shelter, we'll be exiting this south door, right here in the council chambers, going downstairs to the basement hallway. And we're monitoring the weather during the meeting, so we'll let you know. Also, I wanted to let you know that the Public Works Department received an award from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. They received the 2018 Local Government Partner of the Year Award. This is a national award to the City of Urbana Public Works Department for outstanding waste reduction achievements. So this means the 80 employees of the Public Works Department has been recycling and reusing, tracking data since 2012. They've recycled batteries, oil, antifreeze, tires, solvents, landscape materials, concrete, asphalt, lamps, scrap metal, and much more. And in 2017, the Urbana Public Works Department recycled more than 9,600 tons of materials, including construction and demolition debris, and achieved a 90% diversion rate. And that's what this award is recognizing. And they were the national award winner for the Great Lakes region for 2018. So congratulations to all in public works for these efforts.
Woo-hoo!
Yeah.
Yeah!
It's not an accident.
It's intentional and daily efforts on behalf of our employees, every one of our employees.
And it doesn't hurt to go to those demolition sites and ask for bricks. You can rescue bricks.
That's true. The second announcement I have is that the Urbana City Council is going to be considering taxing the sale of recreational cannabis. This discussion will begin at the Committee of the Whole meeting on August 23rd and August 26th, and the city council meeting on September 3rd. But we wish to invite the public to provide input and comments on the sale of recreational cannabis in the City of Urbana at the August 19th city council meeting. So that's next Monday's meeting. It'll be an agenda item for receiving input from the public. It will not be a discussion item next week, but it will be an opportunity for the public to provide input, and we'll be doing a press release this week to announce that as well. So people who want to provide general comments on sale of recreational cannabis, you're welcome to do so next week in advance of the consideration of the topic on the Committee of the Whole meeting on the 26th.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other staff reports? All right, moving on to ordinance number 2019-08-043, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 9.5, Article 2, concerning raffles. This is coming from the city clerk and the mayor.
Yes, I'll speak to that. We propose to amend the city code to conform to the Raffles and Poker Runs Act that was recently passed by the Illinois General Assembly. The changes in this act took effect in July. And we also wanted to respond to recent requests for the city to accommodate so-called progressive raffles. Queen of Hearts is one example of so-called progressive raffle. And this ordinance also proposes changes in the fee scheduled to reflect the amended code. One of the things that initiated this whole thing, in addition to the changes in state code, was that the Developmental Services Center wishes to conduct a raffle at Bunny's in Urbana. VFW is also conducting a Queen of Hearts raffle. Their DSC will conduct that same sort of raffle in Champaign. And there's at least one local environmental group who intends to do a Queen of Hearts raffle in Champaign as well. The purpose of this is to raise money for the nonprofit organizations. We have representatives from DSC here tonight to answer any questions you may have about this particular sort of raffle. The summary of the changes that were made by the state is provided in your memo, but the most relevant to us are the changes that remove the requirement for the city to set an upper limit on the prize value. They also removed any limit on the cost of the tickets and the number of days tickets may be sold. The new law also defines the licensing jurisdiction as the location where the winning ticket is drawn, and the law defines and expands the type of not-for-profit organizations that can conduct raffles. So the ordinance tonight, as I said, amends our raffle ordinance to reflect these changes and the new types of raffles that are being proposed in our community. And Assistant City Attorney Kurt Borman is here. He drafted this ordinance and is our local expert on raffles, as is the city clerk's office actually issues the licenses for the raffles. So they'd be happy to answer questions if you have questions.
Questions from the committee. Mary Alice?
So I understand that we are required to update our code based on what the legislature has changed. One thing that I did notice is that one of the items that the legislature changed is only eliminating the requirement that municipalities establish limits on certain items, and therefore we could, if we so chose, put in requirements for those items that are listed there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so I wanted to hear the rationale for removing all of that from our code.
And one is the current limit we have on our raffles, the upper limit is 200,000. Is that right, Charlie? 200,000, which...
Which, for the progressive-type raffles, is really too low compared to what other communities are allowing to make them effective. For example, the City of Champaign, before this state law took effect, I believe raised their limit to 500,000, and I understand they are now considering going back and changing it again. So we decided, in light of the changes at the state, that just in order to provide the flexibility that I think is going to be asked for in the future, we would just not have an upper limit at all.
And then we also removed the cap on the amount of a ticket, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, I don't know. It does make me a little uncomfortable to leave the door wide open, so perhaps, I think DSC is the group that had asked to increase the limit. If I can ask Jared for her to come up. Yes?
Good evening. Good evening.
It's fine.
Okay, good evening, Janice Mackenzie from DSC.
I just wanted to know your plans in terms of the Queen of Hearts. It's a progressive raffle that you have to enter in. At least, it's been described to me that you have to enter in in the beginning, and then in order to stay in every week, if the Queen of Hearts is not drawn, then you have to pay another ticket. Is that right?
Not exactly.
Okay.
So you can choose to participate whenever you want. If you choose to participate the first week and not again until the eighth week, it doesn't matter. Each week that a card is drawn and it's not the Queen of Hearts, those tickets that have been purchased are actually discarded. So it makes no difference when you enter into the raffle. It just is whether or not, you know, you happen to be there and want to do it, or, and as you can imagine, as it continues to gain steam, more and more people then want to make sure they throw their hat in the ring.
And I assume that the Queen of Hearts has just put in, all the cards that have been drawn in the past are just put in every week?
No.
So as one leaves, so the Eight of Spades is drawn, and that's out. That's not possible for the next week.
That is correct. And everything is put on a board face down. Actually, we don't even, we buy that from a company, so we don't have anything to do with that. Everything is laminated. And so each card is numerical. You know, it's given a numerical value from 1 to 54. So if someone's ticket is drawn, they said they want ticket, or card 14, that's cut out using a little X-acto knife or something that can be turned around, and then it will be displayed as whatever card it is, assuming it's not the Queen of Hearts.
So have you talked about the cost of a ticket? Does it progressively change, or is it static?
That's not our intent. Our intent is to do $1 per ticket, and we don't have any intention of going higher than a dollar. So that's our goal, and there's not any incentive to do like, you know, five, you know, six for $5 or anything like that. It's just going to remain a dollar a ticket in our game.
So it'll be a dollar a ticket, but you expect that the pot will be over 200,000?
It could very definitely.
Is there a range?
It just depends. I mean, we've done a lot of research of this around the state. Some of the first raffles we have seen go to 60,000 to 75,000. As you can imagine, it depends on the number of people and, you know, how long it kind of takes it to gain steam, but there's others that have gotten close to a million. Actually, one in Southern Illinois was like 2.4 or something. So it does have the potential. And really, part of the interest from our standpoint, our fundraisers are so labor-intensive and staff-intensive, that this is one that gives us a little bit more flexibility to not have as much staff time put into it than is necessary, and hopefully has a really good return.
And then, is it half and half?
No, it's 60% to DSC, 40% to the person.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're sure welcome. I do want to mention, though, that's if they're, and you know what, guys? We've gone back and forth on this, and I think it is a 50/50 split. It's 60/40 if they're not there. So part of the incentive is to get people in the facility or in the establishment on days that they're not normally super busy. So that's when the drawing will take place. So if people are there, it incentivizes them that they're going to get a little bit more if they happen to draw the Queen of Hearts.
Gotcha.
So my apologies.
No worries. Thank you very much.
You're sure welcome.
Appreciate it.
Charisse.
Yeah, I'm just unfamiliar with the Queen of Hearts whole thing. Could you please explain the rules or how it's, you know, how it's done? I understand it's, you pick a card. Is it a weekly thing, or is it a daily thing, or, anyway?
You know what, it took me a while to get my head around it, too, so I understand. It is a weekly progressive raffle. So right now, and the one that we're going to do in Champaign, we're going to draw every Tuesday. And then it will just become known that every Tuesday at the particular time, which honestly, I can't recall off the top of my head right now, I think it's 6 o'clock, we will draw a ticket. And that ticket is one of two things. If the person is present and their ticket is drawn, we can say, "Charisse, what number of card would you like to do?" And you could tell us that, and we can choose it. Or there's a way to just write it on the back. So if you're not present, you've put card number 22, and then we know that that's your card number, and it gets turned around.
Okay, so I guess my, so this is something that takes all year long?
It could. It could, and actually, just a little bit more than that, because we include jokers, so it could conceivably go 53 weeks without a winner.
Right. Okay, and so then, and you only charge, so for me to be in the Queen of Hearts game, really, because I obviously have never done this, okay, so for me to be in the Queen of Hearts game, let's say you start off at the, I start the first week, and it's a dollar a ticket, I can buy as many tickets as I want?
Yes, ma'am.
So I can buy $25 worth of tickets, and I can put different numbers on the back of each ticket if I want?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, no, that helps. But then, if one of my, let's say, one of my, I picked ticket, I picked number, card number seven, and card number seven is a big joker, which isn't the Queen of Hearts. I have to, in order to win, it has to be the Queen of Hearts.
You're exactly right.
So if I want, I can put $10 more and get 10 more. I can increase my chances every week if I want to. No.
No. The piece you're missing is, so on the week that you bought $25 worth of tickets, and you chose the joker, after that joker has been chosen, we're going to throw away all of those tickets from that previous week. So the pots, or the ticket base starts all over again.
Oh, so then I'd have to buy, in order to be included for the next
Yes, ma'am.
...drawing, I have to buy another $25 worth of tickets.
Or $1.
Or $1.
Yes.
But I'm just, you know, it increases your chances. So if they, if, and then if my ticket, now, what if two people get the same? Has that ever happened?
It doesn't matter, because you only draw one ticket. So, I mean, I'm sure in the pot of things, there'll be many people that have chosen the same number, but we only draw one ticket. So only one person and one ticket number will be drawing per week.
Okay, so, okay, now I'm starting to understand.
No, I appreciate it. I really struggle myself. I, too, have not participated in this, so I struggled myself. But it seems a little confusing, but once you get your head around it, it makes sense.
Yeah, because I was wondering, how can you get a $2 million pot?
Yeah.
It's because, once you play, if I buy $10 for like that first week, and they pull, and my name is not on the, number one, my name is not on the ticket, number two, they don't pull the numbers I picked anyway.
Right.
Then for me to be involved for the next week, I have to play again.
Come back, yes, ma'am.
I have to come back again.
You're exactly right.
I can get you on the comeback.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to understand it, okay. Thank you.
You're sure welcome.
Any other questions from the committee for staff? Dan, do you have a comment?
I would add, there is no direct revenue to the City of Urbana from this. The proceeds go to the organization and to the individual. There's also no direct payoff to the business hosting it. The indirect payoff is the customers coming into the business on, as you said, on a night that's not very busy.
Exactly correct.
So the Esquire in Champaign is hosting the raffle in Champaign.
Correct.
So the only revenue from the city is from the license fee that the organization will pay.
Right, and then whatever your local tax base would be for the bars or whatever for increased business that night, yeah.
Charisse, did you have another question?
Yeah, and I just, I lost it, just that quick.
If you think of it, let me know.
Okay.
I didn't entertain a motion if someone was so interested in moving this, so we could have a discussion amongst ourselves.
Oh, I move to approve the changes in the raffle.
You want to send it to the council with a recommendation for approval?
No, I move, what am I moving for?
It's an ordinance.
Oh, oh, well, yes.
We're in committee, we got to send it to council.
Okay, I move to send this to council for approval.
That's what I mean.
That's the one, Dean, thank you very much.
Do I have a second? Okay. All righty.
Is it okay for me to go sit back down, or do you need me up here another minute?
You're all right, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Charlie?
If I could add, you know, since the clerk's office handles this licensing, the changes here don't have much impact on what we're doing. There is one small change. We've added a very cheap license of $10 for low-value raffles to try to encourage people to come in and register their raffles so that they're legal in the City of Urbana. And also, we have a fairly streamlined process, and we want to make this very easy on us. We don't want to have to re-license the same raffle week after week. We've worked out a pretty well, a pretty nice system with the VFW, and we get their reporting and everything else, thanks to Kay and the clerk's office. So, you know, I think what we've got works, and this just simply, you know, modernizes the ordinance that we have to take into account the changes that the state legislature has made.
Do we, Charlie, let me just think, did we establish a limit for the lower-budget raffles?
Yeah, it's $5,000, I believe.
Okay, I thought it was $5,000. All right, so I've got a motion and a second as their discussion. Mary Alice?
So, as I said, I think that certainly all the changes, I mean, were required to make all the changes that the legislature has now made to the state law. I am not comfortable having no maximum amount on this. I would be fine with having an amount of 750 to $1 million, but to just leave it completely open-ended, that's not something that I'm very comfortable with. I don't know if I can make an amendment now, or if it needs to go to city council before it has an amendment. Clerk? Either way, then I'll make a motion that we...
Mary Alice?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
I just think maybe we could ask staff to give us an idea of, rather than pulling it out of the air right now, maybe let's ask them to offer a limit to us and see if we find that appropriate.
Totally fine. Yep.
Okay. Yes, Charisse?
Yeah, I do have a question, too, regarding the license required to, for low-level, is that what you call them, Charlie?
Yeah, in the state of Illinois, if you have any kind of raffle involving money, you have to register with the local authority.
Okay, so my question is, what would be considered lower-level raffles? I mean, with the Queen of Hearts, would that be, that wouldn't be a lower-level raffle?
No, that's going to have a much bigger pot, but, you know, something like a 50/50 raffle at the local VFW.
Well, would they, would the Queen of Hearts raffle, whatever, be required, or also get a license?
Yes, oh, yes, yeah. And they'll need to have a higher level, because their minimums are going to be substantially more.
And what was the other, what's poker runs? I didn't understand that either.
I don't know, maybe Kurt can explain it. Poker run is typically, I haven't done one in a long, long time. I did one as a runner. Basically, you go from station to station, you draw a card, and at the end, the, you know, the highest winning...
You have a hand in poker.
Basically...
So you might go to five bars, get five cards, and then you have a poker hand.
Oh, obviously, I do not gamble. Okay, okay, so...
And then everybody plays their cards on the...
Okay, well, what about like a bingo game? Would that have to be included in something like that?
I don't know about bingo games.
Because you're still, you're drawing, you're still drawing out numbers, and somebody, you know, that's kind of like, almost like a raffle, and people have to pay for their cards, and, now, that I have played. That's why I wanted to understand, so when you said lower-level type of raffles, that's why I was wondering, if something as simple as the church bingo game, that where you get, you know, there's a $500 pot if you win, or would that be, would they be required now to get a license for the weekly Tuesday bingo game at, you know, St. John's of the Prairie, or whatever?
I think we'll have to, I think we'll have to get an answer for you on that, so, because...
May require some research.
Okay.
But we can probably get that back next week. Charisse?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mary Alice? Did you have another comment?
I have a question.
Okay.
So I'm curious, because the State of Illinois, I suppose, is a non-for-profit, the university, I'm thinking, the university runs raffles sometimes, and I'm curious if they are, they fall under this, where they have to get a license.
They actually do. The Moms and Dads Association comes by, the different student organizations come by. We have about 25 or so licenses a year. A number of them are from campus.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Dan?
I would like to get a sense of the range that the council would be comfortable with in terms of an upper limit, if you're asking for a recommendation from staff.
Having heard what she said, I'm thinking somewhere in the range of 3 to 5 million.
I mean, the upper limit would be a million for me.
Why a million?
Well, I mean, this is a gambling. I mean, we're trying to help nonprofits here, but it is also a gambling entity. And we are also expanding, not we, the state legislature is expanding the organizations that are allowed to do this. So for those reasons, I think it's, I'm hesitant to go over $1 million.
Diane, didn't we send a table with other people's limits currently on raffles in an email earlier this week with this ordinance? Or am I thinking of something else?
I don't recall that.
Because that might be useful information to see what our neighboring municipalities are doing as well, or if we're the only people who are offering an unlimited ceiling.
Well, this law just took effect, so other communities are going to be responding, you know, as time goes on. But we're bringing this to you because of the interest in the community from several different organizations.
Well, Mary Alice, that makes me think that maybe I would support a more conservative number at get-go, and if organizations want to come and provide justification for us needing to raise it, we can always amend the ordinance later on down the line.
Yeah, I'm certainly open to that. Thank you.
So my question then would be, considering, because she was saying that in Southern Illinois, there was one that was 2.5 million. So if we have a limit of a million, what's to be done if, let's say, one of the Queen of Hearts games gets to 3 million?
Well, they can't sell any more tickets than what they can raise if we make a limit.
Okay.
That would be my assumption.
Under the new law, the new law and this new ordinance both reflect the fact that raffle tickets are now able to be sold statewide.
Where they could not before.
Where they could not before. So the significance of that is, putting a limit on this ordinance is not going to stop raffle sales in the city. And it's not, because all an organization needs to do is get a license from someplace else, from Champaign, from any other place in the state, from Chicago. And they're allowed to sell statewide. They can sell as many tickets as they want to in Urbana.
It's kind of like a lot.
The only limitation would be that you need an Urbana raffle license if you're going to actually draw the winners in Urbana. If you're actually going to, if you're actually going to gather in Urbana, have everybody show up in Urbana, at an Urbana location, and determine who wins. But nothing is stopping anybody from getting a raffle license from anywhere else in the state and coming to Urbana and selling as many tickets as they want to, and then they have the drawing across the border. So that was one of the rationales, that, you know, you know, setting a limit is really not going to do a whole lot for us. It just means that some establishment in some other jurisdiction is going to get the benefit of having the people gather for the drawing.
Okay. Mary Alice?
So with that in mind, well, DSC is talking about going to the Esquire, so that's in Champaign. It doesn't fall within our jurisdiction, so our rules wouldn't apply, but I do think that Jared's suggestion of finding out what other communities are thinking about doing would be the first step in this process. I think Champaign, I think the mayor had said the Champaign at the moment has 500,000, could increase it. Will they increase it or just remove the cap completely? It would be good to know.
We'll get what information we can, but it's still early in the game.
All right, well, we do have a motion and a second, and we have some direction for staff on coming back with some idea of a limit to us, as it's been proposed that we're interested in doing so. And I would happily take a vote unless there's more comments. All right, all those in favor, push this forward, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. All right, that ordinance moves forward to the council with a recommendation for approval with a little bit of staff input to come back to us next week. All right, next up, we have ordinance number 2019-08-044, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Springfield Avenue at Bucie Avenue, and I believe this also has to do with the following ordinance as well. Craig, correct?
Good evening. The ordinance says, before you amend the Urbana traffic code to prohibit parking primarily at the northeast corner of Springfield Avenue in Bucie, which you see before you. This location is part of our upcoming Lincoln and Springfield resurfacing project, and in the process of performing design on that project, we noticed, staff noticed, that there were some visibility concerns with vehicles exiting Bucie onto Springfield that there were some visibility concerns with vehicles exiting Bucie onto Springfield Avenue. So we performed a, what's called a site triangle analysis, and we determined that there were cars that were really parked too close to the corner to safely allow a vehicle to exit Bucie onto Springfield Avenue safely. So the ordinance before you expands the no-parking area to eliminate two more stalls worth, I mean, the stalls out there now are not marked, they're unmarked, but the, it expands it a hundred and fifty-one feet to the east there. This was brought forth to the Urbana Traffic Commission in April, and the commission voted to forward this to the committee of the whole.
Thank you, Craig. Are there any questions for Craig? Sharice?
Are, are there, is there a designated no-parking zone there now?
Yes, yeah, it's just, just to this side of this driveway, so it's right, more like right in here, where the hand is.
Mm-hmm.
We're, we're expanding it approximately sixty-nine, seventy feet, something like that.
Okay, and it's part of the reason is the way that, I, I guess, too, that, that blocks the, the vision is because of, if you're going north onto Bucie to get onto Springfield, it actually goes kitty-wampus kind of, doesn't it? It's not a flush with, with Springfield.
Right, it's, it's actually more south coming off of Bucie onto Springfield, yeah. So when you come down, you're looking to your left, and it's fairly tight there. We have, in a five-year period, we've had two crashes that we can attribute directly to that lack of visibility.
Okay, thank you.
And Craig, I just had one question, that, this is, this is the corner that has a bus stop right there, right before Bucie?
Yeah, there's a bus stop there, there's a large tree. We looked at, at that, too, we do not feel that that contributed to visibility issues there. It's more the parked cars which are farther out towards the lane.
Okay. Alright, is there a motion? Mary Alice?
I'd like to move ordinance number two thousand nineteen zero-eight zero-four-four, and ordinance amending Section J of Section twenty-three one-eight-three of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Springfield Avenue at Bucie Avenue, with a recommendation for approval to City Council.
I'll second it.
Alright, moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Dean. Is there any further comments or questions? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Alright, that ordinance moves forward, and the following ordinance, Craig, is directly related as well.
Yes.
Okay, this, next ordinance is ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash zero-eight dash zero-four-five, and ordinance amending Schedule M of Section twenty-three dash one-hundred-and-ninety of the Urbana Local Traffic Code to establish a tow-away zone in a specified place on certain streets, Barrenry Drive.
So the ordinance before you establishes a tow-away zone at the southern end of Barrenry Drive, which is a, it has what we call a hammerhead at that location, where it's basically, you come down and you can pull into, a little bit of a pull-off, back in, and then go and turn all the way around. Public Works Department snowplows drivers have indicated that there have been parked cars at the end of that hammerhead, which has prohibited those snowplows to safely turn around, so they have to actually back up along Barrenry up to Trails Drive. Yeah, the Engineering Division did an analysis there, we also asked our snowplow drivers with a tandem to go out, we videotaped and took measurements, we also notified the folks there, four houses at the end there, or the, two primarily on the southern end, and brought that forth to the Urbana Traffic Commission. After much discussion, it was decided to take an initial step of establishing a no-parking zone forty-two feet from the southern end, that would also serve as a tow-away zone after two inches or more of snow. We felt that that, the commission felt that that was a good first step to establishing this versus, say, something more, you know, specific like a permanent tow-away zone. So this was felt by the commission to be a, a good first step. This will be the first ordinance within the city that will be hinged directly to two inches or more of snow.
Alright, questions for Craig? Sharice?
At the, okay, at the end of Barrenry Drive, these are, are these just single-family homes in, looking at?
Yes, it's a residential area.
Okay, so there aren't any apartments or anything like that where it require, okay. I just wanted to understand, because you got the big red square there, so, not seeing how it actually comes out, but, okay.
Alright, any other questions for Craig? I entertain a motion if one was put forward.
I'd like to move that ordinance number twenty-nineteen oh-eight oh-four-five, and ordinance amending Schedule M of Section twenty-three dash ten of the Urbana-
Section one-ninety.
Huh? What?
Sorry, it's listed wrong on the, on the, on the sheet. It's twenty-three dash one-ninety.
Sorry, twenty-three, one-ninety, seeing that, I can't get any of this right. Twenty-three, one-ninety of the Urbana Local Traffic Code to establish a permanent-
Establish a tow-
A tow-way zone in this specified place on a certain street, Barrenry Drive, be moved to City Council for approval.
Second.
Alright, seconded by Mary Alice, moved by Sharice. Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Alright, that motion passes, and that ordinance will go forward to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Alright, our last ordinance of the evening is ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash zero-eight dash zero-four-six, and ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section three dash forty-three, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for Kami Inc., DBA El Progreso, located at five-ten North Cunningham Avenue, number seven, come from the mayor.
So I'll wear my local liquor commissioner hat and ask that you increase the number of Class C liquor licenses. This is a packaged, for packaged sales, El Progreso is a grocery store. That is related to the change of Class C from twenty-two to twenty-three licenses. The other strike-throughs on that chart there, under Class A, we go from twelve to eleven, the Save-A-Lot, as you recall, you approved earlier this year, a poor license for Save-A-Lot, they chose not to renew that, so we are back down to eleven of those. Class C, or Class BW, believe it or not, is for a sidewalk cafe, it's one of the reasons we're rewriting our liquor code, so these class names actually make sense. But anyway, that's a, a, a addition to another basic license, so that doesn't require council approval, but we have increased the sidewalk cafe licenses from ten to eleven. And then CA one is one of the catering classes, and that goes from two to one, and that was Lumen LLC, did not renew that particular license. But what you are approving tonight is the Class C license for El Progreso.
Okay, any questions? I entertain a motion if one was there, there is one correction that goes along with this ordinance.
Oh, and you should have on your, on the dais, the new version of it.
Okay. I, and I do have the, the correction, so, I don't know if I should maybe give someone else the chair, and maybe I can make the motion, since I have the language in front of me. Mary Alice, would you take the chair?
Yeah, absolutely. Jared, would you like to make a motion?
I would. I'll move ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash zero-eight dash zero-four-six, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section three dash forty-three, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for Kami Inc., doing business as El Progreso, located at five-ten North Cunningham Avenue, number seven, forward with a recommendation for approval with one correction, that in Section One, we are replacing the words, "is hereby amended and as amended shall read as follows," with the words, "is hereby amended" with the underlined text indicating new language and the strike-through text indicating deletion as follows. Be sent to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Sharice. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Do you want me to just adjourn?
You've got the chair.
Uh-huh. With no further business before this committee, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.